We had a lot of chatter and all that, so that's always a good sign. That's always saying people that work with me, I've heard me say that before. So a lot of chatter going on, that means that we're happy to be where we are and we're happy to be around each other. And I am, want to say, well, welcome you all being here. Thank you all so much for following the program. At this time, I'd like to call on Pastor Johnson Ellison of Tenth Valley Church to build a dedication, but we can stand and remain standing. Councilor Boyd is on the beat of the table.
So one of the things I like to do is take a verse of Scripture and use it as prayer, and pray for Scripture. And so there's a verse that I'm going to use for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me this privilege. Psalm 33:12. Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, the people whom he has chosen as his own inheritance. That would be my basis for prayer tonight as we pray, let's pray. Now, God Almighty, immortal, invincible, magnificent, Lord, there is no galaxy that extends beyond your reach. Galaxies we've not even discovered yet, Lord, it still is within your scope. Lord, there is no power, no storms, no space or constellations, Lord, that don't fall within your reach. And so tonight, we're looking at that. We ask that we would be held under the shelter of that as a city. Lord, your word says blessed is the nation. We're blessed. We gave blessings from you. That is, in my mind, so much of what Phoenix City is. We have received such good from you. What blessed, your word said blessed is the nation. What Phoenix City is not a nation, it certainly is a microcosm of this nation with civic and governmental leaders and business leaders and church leaders and many other types of things. What I thank you for, for that, for our mayor, for our city manager, for our assistant manager, for our city council. What if all those who make up City Hall and working there are our police chief and all the police force, our fire chief and all the fire department, and all the other areas from maintenance to sanitation to recreation? More to the school system, Lord, we give you thanks. And when I'm sure I miss some entities, I miss some areas, which is just a statement of how blessed we are to have so much in this place. And we thank you. What your word says blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. Lord, you gave us that name in the Old Testament, your personal name. You've given us your personal name, so we don't have to wonder who you are or where you are or what you are. Lord, you are Lord Yahweh. But Lord, as a personal name, Lord, that you are, Lord, our King. And in 2025, we'll operate in Phoenix City with both represent that as personal and relationship to you, but also as the power that you are King. What your word says, blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, the people whom he has chosen for his own inheritance. Lord, an inheritance is something we receive as a result of our relationship to another. Father, you are the owner of that inheritance. You own cattle and a thousand deals. And so in 2025, I pray that as a city, we might acknowledge you in a personal way, but also rest under the power of your oversight, that we might be the beneficiaries of that inheritance, even as we have, that would detain you even more. And Lord, we pray this in the mighty and the righteous name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Johnson. So listen, please. Ladies and gentlemen, to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in their honor and invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Ellison and Councilor Boyd. Thank you so much, and thank you for everyone here. We are grateful and thankful that you all have chosen to come out. We are excited about this because we hear us. All of us a chance to show how well and how great the city has done. And it has been successful because first of all, this is a praying counter. Second of all, we have great people. And I said manager, the team on, and we're going to talk about that a little later on. But we certainly welcome all of you all being here. Again, it gives us an opportunity to show how great we've done collectively as a city. So the plans are to hopefully by seven o'clock, we can be late. However, we want to do the presentation in 30 minutes. We're not going to be so too long because all of us can read. But I do want to try to finish that in 30 minutes and then leave 30 minutes for questions. And we do want to have people that ask us questions. Again, that gives us an opportunity to show how transparent and wholesome we are. Although sometimes we would rather use that against us, but we are very wholesome and transparent. So if you have any questions, we'd like you to ask them. Or what we would like you to do is come to the mic, say your name and what district that you are in, because it will give a council member an opportunity to also answer the question based on the district that you live in. So that is the reason why I'm asking you to do that. Also, if you're out there live and looking, speaking or whatever, you can go to city clerk@phoenixal.gov and put your questions in also. Am I correct with that?
Yes.
That clerk?
Yes.
Again, that's city clerk@phoenixal.us. So we're going to go ahead and get into the presentation. Again, we don't want to keep you all night. However, you're welcome to stay as long as you want to. But I will gather out there and say, these lights will go off. So that may be a sign for you. You have to leave here no matter where you go. But we do want to give people time to ask questions. So again, thank you all for being here. So we're going to go ahead and get into the presentation. And I apologize for having to turn it back to you all, but we don't know any other way to do that. Okay. The highlight for me is to be able to introduce our city council members as well as our city manager and our city clerk. As you see, Britt Boyd, who was very pro-teen, who did prayers. Councilman Bailey is not able to speak here on the mic, but he called and said he hates these messages, but he's not feeling as well as he often needs to. Next, we have Councilwoman Carter, who's District Two councilperson. And we also have a council member, Dave, who is in District Three. We have our city clerk, Shannon Davis, who's been here nine years. We have our city manager, which I'll come back, and we'll see him again on this slide. He's been here 39 years. So it's a pleasure and an honor for me to introduce them for what they do and how they keep their country. Next, we have Assistant City Manager, James Gamm, who's been with us one year. Stand, stand, stand up. We want you to remain standing here for once. So we want to call them now, tell you to leave our way. Next, we have Sean Covington, who's our economic development. He's been here 13 years. And if I get somebody wrong, you won't tell me. We have Agent Moore, an engineer and public works, who's been here 19 years. And we have LaBrietta King, who's our finance director. And she's been with us 15 years. We have our chief of police, Chris Kennedy, has been here 35 years.
Fire department.
Fire department, I'm sorry. Been here 35 years. We have our human resources director, Stephanie Chestain, who's been here 24 years. You see? Oh, yeah. Okay. And we have our IT person, Mike Flowers, who's been here 17 years. And we have Tammy Hinton, who's our library director, who's been here two years. And we also have Ruby White, who is our municipal court, who's been here 32 years. We have Todd Hughes, who I just found out is redlining the wall, so I think that for some time. He's been here 27 years. We have Rick Rogers, who's our building department person, who has been here for 27 years. And of course, Wallace Beenhund, who's our... You don't have to say it since you're up high. Wallace Beenhund, who's also our public safety director, who's been here 39 years. We have Chief Stollinger, our police department chief, who's been here 32 years. We have John Sprague, who's over at utilities, that's been here 14 years. And we do have Mike Harper. I don't know whether Mike is here, but he's been here five years. And the reason why I wanted to stand is that collectively, they have been here for about 310 years collectively. That's a great amount of experience. And the experience that they have correlates with how great the city has done in the last ten years. We're going to be, hopefully, show that and convince some people. Although we know that's only impossible in the end. Because that's everyone, because of their years of experience, they have been successful. And like I said, manager, putting this team together, over 310 years of experience that has made this city great. Mike and Chris, please stand. Mike, how long have you been here?
Eighteen, seventeen years.
Seventeen years, Chris?
Seven.
Seventeen years. So even with that, we see it's way over that amount. Their experience has caused, from the guidance and leadership of the city manager, putting this team together. Because of that, we have been able to have great...
Don't forget back, Jennifer, I'm going.
Oh, Jennifer, you better set the standard. How long have you been here?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years. So we got a weapon of experience that has caused the city to help create some great things. So if you all online, let's give them a hand. That's why I want to... Please, everyone, thank you all for being here. Please, see it on, we have our judges and our attorneys here. We have the Honorable Judge Walton. Stand, please. We have this page here. Okay. We have our attorney, Jim Grant, and our attorney, Jim Pym. Let's give them a hand. Hopefully, we can show in these slides how great we have done. There you sit. But you may, you may want to stand up. Sometimes he doesn't stand up. Hopefully, we will be able to show and convince you and the others how well and how great the city has done within the last ten years. We have a mission statement. We're not going to go with that. Like I said, we don't want to insult people who read that. But we do have a mission statement. But one of the key things in there, we talk about trust and transparency for the government. And as I say, I know sometimes maybe people try to use that against us. But like I said, this council, we have done everything transparent. And we have never, ever tried to tell someone before we need how to vote. We do not do that because it's unethical. And I want to challenge you all that when we're wrong, you don't go and put people in place that's going to have a best interest of the city, that has integrity and character, immortal. You do not need to vote. Okay? We are passionate about it, am I right, councilman?
Absolutely.
We have our four badges in there. You can talk about the badges and the badges that we create today are those attributes that I just spoke about. See it on. Okay. I am not going to, and I know that's kind of a small group, but I'm not going to go through these line items. But I do want you to look there, as you can see. We started the grant code 10 minutes ago, the grant team together in 2008, so 16 years ago. And you look at this at the bottom and together. Between those years, none, city funds, $16 million. City's funds were 2.5 million. That's the, that's the amount we had to match to be able to get those grants for that total amount. But what I'm going to do is fast forward to the last page of this, because I know that this, the last page is where the growth rates were. Right there in between. They want you to see that grant code. The non-city funds, $51 million that we were able to save. From 2008 until 2024, that grew 243% of how much we grew in getting the grants. Think about that, 243%, where we grew from 18 million to 51 million, that we were able to get grants. But the kicker is there is that the city funds portion, when you see the 12.5 million and the green, that's the amount of money we have to have to be able to match the grants to receive a total of $51 million. If we did not have the money to match those grants, we would not have been able to get that amount of money and we would have lost out on a lot of opportunities for the greatness that we've been able to do with the city. And even when you look at that, it's 2.4 million in 2008 and has grown 12.5 years. That's 460% increase. That's astounding. So that's a great job that we've done. And we're going to get into some other things to show you where we found that grant money. Here we all know, since COVID, all confidence in business, I think I can safely say that, the workforce attitude has changed. There's no difference in the city. When we look at this, and I said this last year to you all, and I'll get to it, our workforce has decreased. Look at the total number of positions that we have budgeted. Here on the corner left, can you all see that? I hope you all can, to the corner left, where you see the budget position for 2025. Administration all the way down to utilities. That total equals, we have budgeted for 501 workers. To the far right, where you see 2024, that adds up that we only have 415 employees. Last year, I reported that we were like 30% short of workers. It has improved some of which is 27% less workers than what we need to have, what we budgeted for. And when you look at the administration side, the mayor plus one, we're down 31%. Regulations and amenities, that portion went down 36%. Public safety, which has stayed pretty steady, their public safety, we're down 19%. Uh, Chief Stollinger, how many, and I know I should have asked you, thank you, how many have we down?
30 police officers.
But we have stayed flat. And so that's the one that has been steady, is towards the policemen. But even with that number compared on the amount that we have budgeted for, we're still down 90%. Engineering, public works, it's still kind of flat. They had some movement in that, but we're still down 25% of the budgeted amount of workers that we gave. 25%. Then you look at utilities, we're down 31%. That's dead pretty flat. But the total budgeted amount, as you put it, the budget for employees, 571. We only have 415, which is a difference of 156. So good paying jobs, great benefits. So if you know anybody that's looking, we would love to have. However, one of the problems we have, and I'm looking at our HR director, when we get people in, can't hardly get them past the drug test. And we can ill afford to hire people that's going to put this city, your taxpayer money, in a liability situation. We just not even want to do that. So when you see these workers out of work, please, if you can give them compliments, because a lot of times they're pulling double dues, because we still almost 30% down on our workforce. City infrastructure parks, these are the local streets. From 2009 to 2024, which is 15 years. The total cost that we've done in research in local streets has been $15 million, $16 million. That's a cost of about $220,000. $15 million, guess what? It's all been paid. Next, city infrastructure parks, these are proposed resurfacing, as you see by the district, we want to make it as equal as possible throughout the district. As you see, District One, 2.4 miles, two, 2.9 miles. District Three, 2.4 miles. Reason why we do that, just because there's a lot of people who's anti-government for Phoenix City. Always try to say, you do more on one end than you do on the other. This council is very conscious of that. The city manager is really conscious of it. So that's why we try to make sure whatever we do in every district is as balanced as possible. And let me say this probably shouldn't. We do have a district that has a majority of ethnicity. But no majority of ethnicity owns that district. None. And we don't take it lightly, but we try to spread things out. However, we're going to do what's best for the city, even though it may get to it in some, but we're doing what's best for the city in the citizens of this community. City infrastructure, I'm not going to read all that. One of the biggest ones up there is CRO Bridge. We were, the open, was that last March? April, March, we did that. Supposed to talk more about that. You see, that was 2.3 million, some of that, most of that is the grant. However, when you look at all, all the projections of infrastructure we're planning to do, has been completely excused. That comes up to be $5.4 million. When you look at that white column and all of those things, total amount that has been completed equates to $5.4 million. So we're too big to be small, as I said. Proceeding on, these are other infrastructure things that we are planning on doing that's ongoing. The first one is $716,000, which is in District One. The other one is $705,000. And you can see those miles of roads that we will be resurfacing and thinking. That's $705,000. And District Three is $627,000, which is a total amount of $2 million that will be spent. Okay? Proceeding on, other infrastructure projects, these are some that are engineered and public works. You can see those 14th Street street escape that we're doing. But the biggest one is CRO resurface project, which is costing $1.6 million. These are things ongoing. The other 14th Street is, has two of them. The other one is $1.1 million. But these are projects that are ongoing and are time to cut down. City utilities. These are some that have been completed. It's also something that's in the pipeline now. This is critically important, mission critical important. We have to make sure, because of health and safety, it costs agents and other agents rightfully. So we have to make sure our water supplies are top notch. We don't want to be kind like any other cities that we know. I'm not going to call them the cities, I think probably most of us know where they work, that if you don't invest in that, we're leaving the next generation what it costs. It's going to be part group of what it costs now. So we have the responsibility. And we have to be willing to be big up to do what's right for the next generation. When you start talking about utility projects, you see the very first one, the wastewater treatment plan upgrade, it's going to be $12 million. I'll import. This is mission critical to this community for the safety and welfare of the world. And let me tell you something, this is a tough thing we have to deal with. And how do I want to say this? We have to operate this. We have to, we have to make sure that we're doing it and making sure that the cost is going to be beneficial for the results. This is always something that moves. Because there's so many regulations that people don't understand that we have to comply with. There's several other things we have to do to make sure. And we, we get attacked a lot. But at the end of the day, we got to make sure we're doing it right for everyone. City utilities, waste water treatment upgrade. That's the first one we had. $12.4 million that we spent for that. The next one is the wastewater treatment. And this, all this stuff is over my head. And there's some questions at the end that you all asked me. The utility director, and I'll repeat, saying, you know, wastewater treatment is food on a grid, ladies. Complete, $439,000. Clarify. Upgrades and improvements, that's the thing that's spinning. $2.3 million that has been completed. Here, the water control center, this is one we just had to deal with this arrangement from along, John, that we had to make sure we get hard in and make the whole system work. Am I correct? And this went down, so we had to do some emergency improvements and things to get that working. Because if we don't have that, nothing will work. Great thing, commercial development, this is down before 31. You all know we have a windmill, we have a circuit cage, raceway. We have a park over there, and we have Jackson on the other side. And we have other things in the pipeline that will be coming, hopefully, but we can't disclose because of confidentiality. Someone, anything I need to add today? Other commercial development, this is out on 2A. We know S I text about Starbucks and the process, and that will be open in, is that April? April, out back, March, correct? And Poland is open now. You can tell, inline retail, that Jersey Mike, that's AT&amp;T, that's the building that they are competing in. Jersey Mike's supposed to be there in April also. Am I right? Okay. So other opportunities that's in the pipeline that we can't, we can't disclose. There's an urgent care. Yeah, it's right, East Street urgent care, urgency is in there in retail. Thank you, Councilor Boyd. It's also in there. And they are coming in, it is open now? Okay. All right. Thanks, Councilor Boyd. As you all may or may not know, at the Phoenix Corner, where the old Kmart used to be, some stores there now, we do have a center chicken there in the process of getting that done. So that's another commercial development that's going to happen. Construction Development, down in Mansfield, invested $20 million in capital in the company that year to maintain the function that they do. Also, they have $30 million. Outgraded $2 million in capital investment, and there added $24 million. You know, last year, we talked about the CRO Pacific. And I do want to say it like this, is that CRO Pacific, in March, I guess, will pay the same. They're bringing that whole sales room, over 200 people here to kick off there. It's time to say, over 200 people, right in Phoenix City. That's a company that invested over $6 million and will get up to $5 million, six other jobs, correct? And they are in the process of hiring, $27 an hour? Yeah, yeah. Average $27 an hour or so. They're companies, and they show experience that kind of been around for years. $6 million they invested, so we did. Go out, bring your brother and go to old Southern Phoenix to just take a look at it. They invested $6 million.
And District Three.
District Three. All right, District Three. Planning for a comprehensive plan, that's received a few checks, comprehensive plan, and it's ongoing, we need to diagnose. However, once we continue... However, once we continue to do, we are, we will revise the subdivision, uh, ordinance, and we will be adjusting some other ordinance that makes it downtown, because we got a chance. When you see it right here, the comprehensive plan has been completed, and it's ongoing ordinance, which we update, that comply with what we need in the future, we need to have the opportunity to grow into attractive businesses. Future development, it's a lot of this, right over there. We have some property that we own that's closer to the river, but we also have some property on Broad Street that we own, that we're in the process of improving. And we've invested some money in it, because we know that that's gonna be a hotspot for us to be, to be tapping in on both sides where you can look. The ones in Phoenix City, but it takes time, and it takes money. So that's right across from here, and we're gonna build a lot of green space, and we, quite naturally, you know, we got some foundation, American Visibility Act. So a lot of that just takes place, but we have conscious of making investment in that property, so that it can be more retail, and living space where people can more go hang out. And I think it's also in the entertainment district, that section is already in the entertainment district. Commercial development, we've grown a lot of that, uh, existing retail, retail, and all those stops you see there, they want to make sure that, I'll let you all know, that's not target. Business, where they look at a certain amount of population that we're not quite there yet.
Their target's just not targeted.
Their target's for new retail, but it's not the target, so we don't want anybody, for our understanding, we get the target, hopefully we will.
Not that.
But, 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 not that, man, but, uh, you know, the reason why it's hard to attract a lot of those businesses is because they look at a certain number of people in the population, and if you don't fit that box, then there's a lot of chances you won't be able to get there. For those existing, as you see in Phoenix, Paulson, when I went over, two eighty north, and I found on, uh, four thirty-one, this calls me, and we've had a lot of, a lot of development out on A D, which we got some other things in the pipeline that we may be pretty close to getting, but can't tell you right now, confidentiality. A lot of great things happened. Fire department, we finally finished the fire training center, uh, this pocket is five million dollars, paid cash for it, just catch it. You have burned buildings in there, you have the baseboards, you do the training, but the great thing about it does add some economic development and cash to the house because other fire stations, other cities do training here, we have over like a bed, uh, with the, the rains.
They can pump them all over.
They can dump them all over and do the training, they got to stay here. So they have to stay in our hotel, and eat our foods, and all of that, so it is, it does have an economic benefit side to it. But we're grateful that that's open, but that cost five million dollars, hey. These are some of their, at the radis, uh, and I'm learning about this, this is a trailer where they carry the tank chain, so when they're out. When they're fighting fires, they don't have them in the oxygen, I guess, it's not oxygen, it's air. It's air that if it runs out, they don't have to run back to a station. You can transport that and rebuild the loading machine right there on site. That's ninety thousand dollars, and that was huge for, for us to get that. Of all, out of time, doesn't wait for you, keep the neighbors. Two pockets in any, one point eight million dollars that you see there, one point eight million, all that. Takes a lot of money in the city, let me tell you something, Phoenix City is too small, too big to be small. We're, we're a free-sized city, and we're not as small, we're small, but we're too big to be small. Parks and Recreation, thought I'd have me out, these are all the things that we offer in the past, and there are other future events that we put on the community that will hopefully create a better quality of life for our citizens, in particular their children. We've had, how many did you see, thirty? Thirty members?
That's just more of them.
That's part of it, so we got some more coming, okay? You can, you can look at all that, and this, you can get, we'd be glad to get a copy of this slide for you, we are transparent. Parks and Recreation, Miracle Field. That is going to be huge, right now, the first phase of it is, it's a great thing, but along the first phase of it, one hundred fifty thousand dollars that they're doing for the building controls. And that's about ninety percent completed, that's first phase. But this total cost is gonna be about five million dollars. But right now, in the first phase of it, we've already spent one hundred fifty thousand dollars on building, on building controls, and they are in the process. One point five million, what does that mean? Now, one point five, I got one in the five, so assuming one point five million that we've already spent, thank you, Andrew. Right here, uh, future plan for Moon Lake, uh, that we have, and we've got some money for, as you see there, they said limited stage, we're gonna have a pause, we're gonna have uh, which cost that a new date, that, what's that? Prevention and all that, you can stand out. Operation day, so we're in the process of doing that, that's gonna cost a lot of money there, if you like, that's steps, that's our operation, same. Also here, which is the Austin Summer Park, which is known, is known as Rosemont Park.
That's right, that's right.
We're going to build, uh, I don't know whether we done the plans on, right here we showing, but we're gonna build a center now that is for Hope and City, five hundred people. That's, that's, uh, formerly Rosemont Park, but now it's, it's changed, now it's Austin Summer Park, but we're in the process of doing that, and it's going to cost, it's not a regular one, it's gonna cost up to the millions. But those are the plans, and we're gonna build the, uh, community event center that's gonna sit openly, five hundred people. That's the plan there. Parks and Recreation, we know we went over the golf course that we bought last year, we put a million dollars in, uh, irrigation system this year, they started on that in November. That was a million dollars that we put in, uh, there, and waiting for the golf course. Our library. It's well of use, as you see here, we have a total business inside library, last year was fifty-four thousand people. So I can check out fifty-seven thousand and six hundred forty-six, it's well of use, and we can see some of the things we offer in the attendance of program that we had at the library, almost five thousand people. This right here shows you how well it is used. Here, you also will notice where people come from, Lee County, Stone County, Russell County. There, the Rick McCamper, about five thousand four hundred people uses it from Russell County. These are people from outside, but outside Russell County are people out in the county, and I think that's about fifty-four hundred people that use it outside of the city, library. These are things that they offer, and they do, uh, you know, go to spring, also, and some, uh, already got some things on the student program, children program. And, and that's it, but I do wanna say this, I know I didn't put much up on the time machine and all that. We have reduced our debt by another percent. Total debt is a hundred and seven million, however, fifty-nine, now forty-seven million in that, except support. But the general that we owe and out there, it's like forty-six million dollars. We paid that from, from last year, from fifty million to forty-six million, which is a six percent reduction, we paid out there. All the self-supported debt, which we call under the utility department, and the school system, some that we have. We paid that from fifty-seven million, or it has been paid out from fifty-seven million to forty-nine million, which is like fourteen percent decrease. But if you take out the self-supporting, the debt that we have on our general obligations, it's like forty-six million dollars. Which means for every dollar debt that we have now, generally, we have a dollar and twelve cents, which means we have more cash than we do debt on the general side, which is a strong, strong position. Our sales tax revenue year over year is up over two percent, but we haven't seen anything yet as we get all these businesses going. So our sales tax revenue is up year over year, from like three point eight million to three point nine, almost four million dollars. Okay, number of operating days we have, this is very strong. It's four hundred and ninety-four days, which means that we can operate four hundred and ninety days without paying money into the city. This is very strong. Our pet service, cuts, which is the debt we pay, is at nine point seven two percent, I think I'm right, rate. But when we stress it at six percent, it even wide open to seven point two five to one ratio, which means that that's how much money we have left over that we pay our bills. Now, the reason why we kept it at six, I know prime interest rate is seven point five, but the reason why we kept it at six is because of our credit rate, which is double A minus, which means that we would never get charged on bonds or debt more than six percent, because of our credit rate. So we have a very strong credit rate, so with that, I want everyone in here to know that the city has done great within the last ten years, and we got a lot of things that's on the horizon in the pipeline that is going to be taken, but we're not at there to say anything anymore, but that is because of till we sign the dollar line, doesn't take place. So that's our run through for county time, how, how, how long is that, Andrew?
About thirty minutes.
All right, well, at this time, action, you have anything, Council Board, so let me see if we have any questions. And as I said, if you have any questions, if you'd like to state your name and your district, buzz.
Uh, yes, Mayor, I have something, uh, can we get, uh, just the city manager library on the register, April, or December?
For the questions, if you want, all right.
Okay, we'll let him ask the question first.
Yes. Anyone asking questions? Come on down, you have to state your name and your district. Is that mic working? You get that. We, look up the incident.
My name is Jeanne Mitchell, I'm in District Three, uh, this day goes to her. And I'm, I'm still, I had questions on the leaks that we still have in our area. Um, is, I have one, um, that's been leaking and still leaking on my residence. Since October of last year, someone came and supposedly they did something, but it did not stop the leak. Um, and, and I talked to several people, and one lady was really nice. Um, one lady said that we have these all, and you can see that we took, but that's still a problem. When you have to jump over your herd to get to the mailbox, because it's standing warm, and then now it's gonna take three, six months to get that in there. We got mosquitoes and all this to deal with, in excess. So my question is, why, I'm, I'm understanding why we can't get the leaks corrected?
Okay, let me share this with folks, first night, uh, we had, we have that same problem throughout the city of Phoenix, and what we did, we, uh, compacted leaks out, and what they are going through all three districts, and if you get the ten most worst leak in your way for that, we're gonna have somebody else to operate on that bug for us, ready, you can kill it for me.
Jay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll address it. Um, beginning in, uh, December of twenty twenty-three, we basically undertook, uh, a complete, uh, reevaluation and rebuild of the utility department in the city. In December of, of twenty-three, we had three hundred and three non-leaks in the city. Uh, by November of twenty twenty-four, we had a hundred and twenty-three non-leaks. Due to statute shortages in the utility department, and the pace at which we were doing it, we wanted to increase that pace. So City Council authorized us to put out a bid where we had hired a, a contractor to address the leaks, so then again, in December, since then, they've, they've corrected up to one hundred twenty-three non-leaks, approximately fifty-nine to sixty of them. And just so citizens know, how we pick which leak fits, uh, all the leaks are evaluated, and they're triaged to put in order of importance by the volume of water which they lose. So it's not necessarily time, time is a factor of the volume, but the order which we go and repair those is by, by disparity, so.
So what do we spare that in, correct?
I don't know what the address is, I don't know where it's at on the triage list, uh, but we're, we're working at a pace right now of, of somewhere around thirty-plus leaks of a month, uh, to, to get repaired, so I would say you'd see significantly improved next, next three months. Um, only issue, uh, we corrected so many leaks in, in the last year or so, that we've, we've had a marked decrease in wall water volume, it's, it's true, that's what the door filtration plan. I say all that, I wish I could tell you the official leak tomorrow, and then we get to next week, but, but I can't say that. Leaks occur, new ones occur every day, right, and they occur because of age of infrastructure, they occur because of changes of weather. And if you fix a leak, there's gonna be another one, that probably is something, but if you've called and, and your address is on the list, I promise you, it's, it's the triage issue. All the city crews are, are working full speed to do it, and all the, the contractor groups are, are also working against this next.
And, and that's what we put out a note into, was that whole infrastructure that we have, that we have a hundred years old pipe, and so, while I was there, we talked about everything, just about it, that we're gonna fix one, it's gonna pressure on those pipes and make it a lot easier. But, uh, turn that into a schedule, so hopefully sooner than later, we can do it, but, uh, all right?
Thank you.
You come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Ms. Rachel Patrick, and I'm in District Two. Uh, first of all, I'd like to meet the council for their diligence and conservatorship over our two state by eleven percent. I'm here because there are a couple of things that I would like to address, uh, and one of them is the upgrade of our library. Our library should be a center of, or outside of the school system, a place of honor, and if you see a pride in the city, you have to be proud of the library. If it's hearing, that's gonna make a fantastic job. When you go in, you're very welcome, you, there are lots of different resources that you can access, and people are coming, when I was looking at the, how many, the volume that she's getting, she's getting a lot of people from outside our community. Well, that should be, I don't know where they're looking inside, should be the same way as on the inside. So my question is, are there any plans to any upgrading of the library, the city library?
You mean on the outside or the inside?
Outside, yes, sir. The interior, thank you so much for your question, and thank you for coming. Um, as you know, an educated community is a much safer community, and so we have, uh, poured, um, thousands of dollars into our library in recent year. The interior, carpet, walls, the layout of the libraries, geology department, all those have been moved, um, in a centralized location. Uh, but the exterior, uh, as far as pressure washing and making of Facebook could be possibly in the works. Uh, but the interior, like I said, has been totally rebound, um, it was a hung rack, uh, to me and him and Missy, and it's been really been completely stacked, um, because they saw the need for that, and this is not the first time we've had this question addressed. um, because they saw the need for that, and this is not the first time we've had this question addressed. Um, but we took action the first time we heard it, and so we have made significant progress in, um, the outlook of our library. And truly, yes, we do need more citizens within the city, uh, to visit the library. But as I told this year, throughout the day, I'm just gonna say, a lot of people are at work, and it's open in the evening time, um, she she does see more, you know, citizens coming out in the evening time. Um, there was a lunch and learn, what's that today on the sixth? So we have different activities, and once again, the Facebook of it could possibly be improved, but we're making significant stride in in all that we do in District Two.
Okay, uh, my next thing is the homeless grant. I noticed that it was saying that it was rehabbing, prevention. Could you kind of explain how that one was used?
What's that?
The homeless grant from your year.
Is that down at seven more?
This is a homeless prevention stimulus.
Who was the grant that was at this year, the first of the year? It it was done by another, uh, agency.
There you go.
Yes, and my grant was done, uh, we're private kind of that stimulus grant, and so it's actually, no, the city had to apply for it to get the funds, but then we transferred the funds to a a church, uh, I can't remember the name of the church, and they were, they weren't homeless people or anything like that. So it lasted for about a year and a half until those funds were suspended. So that's the older ones who never don't really have any of that go around, they all need grants.
Okay, so that was a community dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
You had to raise for to a church?
Well, they they were, they were the son of recipient of the grants, and everyone actually wanted the grant because they had to go through the city, you know, to get that grant, through the federal estate of those.
And that's not the first time we've done that, another time we did it was in handling the break of the structural organization and it took away. But that that does happen, but we don't have any control over it.
Uh, in the future, when that they can get that grant back, what will be the process to accessing those funds?
You mean individually or as a whole?
As a organization.
But it has to be a sub group that is, that.
Like, like the church? Probably the church, I never, no, I'm talking at that time, so they were getting emails or just looking at.
And watching and looking for them.
Yeah, these things that come.
So you have to look at it, catch in the right time, and we have had it. We have had it before, but the time we had, organizations did not write about it themselves, they took away. It's not a call thing, organizations, but that's, but they are the ones that really controls it, but they have to use and do it on the city to get it together.
Okay, um, my next thing is, it's kind of tricky, I think, but it's very.
Well, it's trivial.
It's the football stadium, we don't research.
We've already, we've already talked about that, and we are, uh, it's in, you talk to the school system, we talked it forward, and we got some things that are playing in that portion, that's taking place.
Okay, and my final question, and this is something I think is something dear to all of us. I have a grandfather who was in his mind, and he has lived in the same house that since I've been in, so that's over something, over fifty years. Uh, but the crime is getting kind of in trouble, and I know he's a private citizen, can't be judged by someone going somewhere and shooting other places. But have we as a city started putting things in place to make our city safer for our older citizens? Because like I said, my grandfather lived in the same house that he's lived in for over fifty years. But now I am, as the granddaughter, becoming more afraid for him because it seems like the crime is escalating, and I don't know what what is the reason, how we can stop it, but have we started kind of strategizing so that we can kind of examine those things?
Well, you know, in today's environment, as you may or may not heard, we're not a person, we're a police officer, but this is a problem around this country, and it's, we knew the exact, uh, model to use to stop it. We can use it to stop it, but I do know that, especially in short, and I do know that the chief has things in place exactly what, but they were doing everything they can to prevent crime, and I mean, the number one thing for us is the safety of this sort of people. And that's why, and I'm getting off, say, when I say I can say something about it, when we did that bridge thing, you, before that, you couldn't even walk across it as a car. And I think that bridge was seventy years old, and we had it replaced, and counting, uncounting people that are frequent, but we take safety, that's the number one thing we did. Uh, I wish, and Chief, you can jump in, but it's a problem throughout this country, and, you know, talking to Mayor Henderson and all that, it's something that make all of us, right? And I think a lot of it, uh, we need to continue to educate more, and I don't mean just with the school system. I'm talking about just educating people, uh, to respect other people. And so that's, that's my take, and that's what I said, Chief, you want?
Maybe elaborate a little bit on that. Often, I really hear about bad issues, uh, big stories, you know, homicides, you know, if you if you only watch the news, you think things are out of control. Um, last year, we had six homicides in Phoenix City, that was about fifty percent of what it was prior to. So the last five years prior to that, we'd like to be zero, but in reality, we're gonna do bad and do things, and, uh, we got, the police department has been very effective, they've raised our spoke to justice. The six homicides we've worked with here, all six of them were solved, five taken to rest. Um, I would urge you, look at the national average, you see that is more fifty to sixty percent range. So, our, even though we've been short-handed, there are officers, some of them are here tonight, and they're not committing a shot. Um, but there's also things as a community that we have to do, like, and collectively, and providing, sure, I've lost surgery, reform was a lot, not our size, but if there's not economic opportunity proposed, I think that's one thing. From some of these slides, you can see the development of the jobs that are coming in. That's really what's gonna change, and that can improve as part of the city, and with the, the building we're standing in is a good example of what the city, some of the things the city is able to do with income, uh, additional tax income that comes from that, and basically improve us throughout the city and the recovery of building, um, pay for employees. So there's been a lot of things behind the scenes, which you all may not directly know about, but, uh, we're making real progress in the police department. We just graduated four, the last police academy, we have four right now in Anderson. We're looking at, we have one in the numbering, so we have five in the police academy now. We have four that are free, that are going to develop and be payable, and we have several in the pipeline. So we made some significant changes, things we're looking at, honestly, we we had, since COVID, we lost, lost our assistant chief, COVID, we lost Captain, we lost a couple of other ghosts that have old retirements, and then there's a large change in our in our workforce, a lot of people leaving the workforce, looking to retire. What that means is we've got a lot of younger people with around ten to fifteen-year range of their career that will build up, expect to take, some of us have been around all these places, but we, we've got a great police department, they're doing great work, we're just, uh, doing their police academy. Back in summer, it was the first year, it's so much more resource officers, can't go so much, just on that program. It was a big success, we're looking to build on that this year, with the Odyssey, uh, Mr. Chancy, our district attorney's here. Juvenile crime, and young people, they find us, and this is in the law, this as well, is here in Phoenix City, this is a big problem, and we put a lot of effort into funding into that to make sure that we have enough beds, so we don't fly with juvenile criminals, the doctors shooting up the city. We've increased our beds, we've also changed from two beds, juvenile beds to five. Else, it increased that's something that we came for, our council and asked for funding for. Talk to Judge Zach Collins, I'm gonna do that on the basement also, but there are a lot of things going on behind the scenes, and we're very keenly aware of the problems, and and we have a strategy in terms of that, so I'm sorry. I didn't want to take up a ton of time, but I wanted to tell you, we, we are tired, we're doing it every day, and I feel like we're making progress.
What, as a community member, or everyone who's sitting out here asking you, that we can help facilitate? Because we do understand a lot of the crimes coming from our memory.
It is, it's increasingly number of people and gun violence, um, and increasing with the gun violence, what we're seeing in training, and I did work in investigations for a good part of my career, it's it's not uncommon to do with shooting scenes now, we see, Mr. Chancy, you know, including this, we'll see fifty, a hundred shell casings because of the gun, gun problem. And, uh, there's some changes in state, all of this are not good for all of us, and they can suffer for us to stop people investigating people carrying guns. I'm pro second amendment, I'm also pro common sense, so, um, talk to your state legislators and tell them that juvenile crime is out of control, and we need some tougher laws and some tougher things in place, and so it will help all of us to be more effective in doing our job. Um, another thing, it's just, if we try to do this to our community, obviously, we should take it with juvenile, our junior piece academy thing, just trying to be more involved with with the young people in this community and building a justice with them, unfortunately, more of our department, I will, uh, in case, as, um, I have some notice back for a little person, you know, before it all in a homicide, um, it was due to work of our officers and through the, that officer's community outreach, directly led to the arrest, we take, we take all of this evidence and, um, get us pointed in the right direction on it. So we really just have to be very involved in the community, involved in our children, involved in schools, and, um, build that trust and give them opportunities to grow.
Chief, can you talk about the state legislation? Let them know, hold on, let this audience know, because if you're walking down Broad Street right now where the chain comes back on, what can you do about it? If far as the law has changed, with the legislature, gotta thank you all.
Yeah, like, I, I lose you on, um, there's no person to carry concealed, carry permanent, of the fire, you can open carry, you can carry concealed, you can carry concealed, you can carry guns in your arm with no permanence, and, um, we're very interested in what we can do to stop detain somebody and investigate the city, there are all some criminal activity, so it requires a handle on the whole community, and, um, basically, you know, let's work this for our local.
I'm saying, inform them, that was done at the level.
That's still amazing, and I know we're conservative, this is a very conservative area, a very, um, you know, people in the South go to church, they're conservative, they believe in family, they also believe in gun rights, and so it's it's a double-edged sword for gun gun rights. I'll say I'm pro second amendment, but common sense has to come into play somewhere. You can't take law enforcement's ability to investigate crime and investigate people who may believe involve some criminal activity, maybe that's where it comes to, make sure that all that is for their goal.
Okay, we, uh, we we are trying. We we is 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 tough, but I can tell you, in short, it doesn't help at all. I hope that answers your question. Yes, ma'am, come on down.
Good afternoon, Mary Davis, I'm in District Three, and, uh, council today. I want to first call that council today, uh, put his diligence and having my current situation, he has been very wonderful, and I appreciate you calling to be here. I definitely want to piggyback on putting this, I hope the fans will get your say, because I have concerns about the leaks and sewage and all that in Phoenix City. Phoenix City has a website that we utilize as citizens, and it's a very good website. Is there any way that we can incorporate a hack link in there where we can put the patresses that we ain't working on? As far as the lawyer problems and issues like that, and I guess that would be, yeah. So citizens, you know, we can share all day that we're working on it, but if you see it in black and white, I have a present there. It's gonna let us know that we can be a part of that, just this is not a, oh, on one situation, we all know my name is here.
What you're talking about, about your.
Yeah, I've been in a hotel for five months, so I I really need to, you know, we need to see some kind of result.
Yeah, I can understand that, I believe we can, uh, make them make sure to look at what those addresses are.
Now, I recall, you were talking about curbs, the leaks.
Well, it was in the water, and so, yeah, so, yeah, we couldn't, we ran it and. Okay, thank you.
It caused other leaks, was it done?
It was done because of sewage, not water, and so I'm not in there in the same thing, but it's something that the seniors want to work on.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, water leak issues have absolutely nothing to do with with particular, huge problem that you suffered in your house. Sewers back there, that's a pretty different.
Well, I guess my thing is, this is going to be some emergency workshop, if there could be a list that's going, if you work out there, remember, you said it was a hundred and twenty-three mile mix? Then we can have something going out there to show, okay, we're at thirty, yeah, for shopping. Maybe that's a chance, my time is coming soon.
I'd be interested in that, but I do want to say this to you, and in this world, there's a level of trust that we have to have that what they say is what they want to do, and as he stated, we started off at three hundred and, I mean.
We we had three hundred in in November of of twenty twenty-three, in November of of twenty twenty-four, we have roughly one hundred and twenty.
And so we reduced it on the half.
We've we've been very aggressive, so we we we're working hard, yeah.
And don't you think publishing that for the statute set, helping the Toronto City, all the improvement to get out.
That's what we're doing here, but yeah, but I hear you, you can.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am, um, she says, resident, uh, I am concerned about the issue regarding the water deals and retroactive building for residents, and I understand that it is for people that feel they have been under underpainted or a few up here, but my point here is, it's a thing that's about triple sense. Consider what I want to know, what you all have in place, a person for situations like that, where if you're a little bitch, and there's no leaks at the house, whatever, you can do a second, there aren't there were something, what I'm, what I'm looking at? That I have to do all in place or address that issue?
Well, I'm, I'm, excuse me, at this time, you want to ask, uh, just to say American number?
But let me say this to everybody, the thing is, that we have made adjustments, but one thing can't be denied that water went through meter, there was some misrepresentation.
Yeah, let me, let's go back, uh, fifteen years. All right, in two thousand and ten, the city contracted with a company called Maxximeter, right? And contracted Maxximeter for a new system of water heaters and registers, um, it's called A R system, automatic system. So in twenty-ten, we were physically able to every address, flip it up in the lid, write it down, the number of gallons that you use, bring it back to the utilities, put it in a computer, and send it up to the lab. So in twenty-ten, uh, the city group purchased this Maxximeter system for approximately three billion dollars. An idea of the system was that instead of having a a meter reader to go to every house, you have a meter tech who's in a truck that's outfitted with a antenna, and the truck then rides the routes, right, with all fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars to give you. The meter tech doesn't have to do that, doesn't have to go there, all that information is sent from what's called a register, which is inside of the meter. The registers are supposed to transmit a signal every eleven seconds, right? They're they're programmed for that, they're self-contained, they have a battery, they're supposed to last ten years, emitting every eleven seconds. So guaranteed, it'll read when you drive through. Well, the first five years, it worked great, we had six or seven of the meters failed. But in twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, we started to experience an unprecedented amount of failures, hundreds, thousands, exponentially grew every month, every year. To the point that we had to get with Maxximeter, the company, they agreed to give us ten thousand new registers, right? And the reason is, they said, well, fifteen thousand that we all installed, what impacted? And the reason is, they said, well, fifteen thousand that we all installed, what impacted? And what the impact of that means is, the register, the device in that pit that sends out a signal, was failing. That's where the computer glitch was. The glitch was this. Instead of emitting a signal every eleven seconds, it constantly emitted the signal, just every second, every millisecond, until the battery died prematurely. Well, when the battery dies, the truck riding around can't pick up a signal, right? There's no signal. And what happens is that the computer system, the signal's not received, it creates an estimated bill, right? And that estimated bill uses a formula to estimate based on prior month's consumptions. So it takes the prior month's consumptions, it applies, and gives you an estimated bill. So what's happened recently is, we've gotten about ten percent of our system is, is not reading, is skipping. Ten percent, it's roughly sixteen hundred million percent. So when we started in January, doing actuaries and pushing to finish the meter register check, it's facing that problem permanently, trying to. When we got an action bill, we found out some customers had been estimated for six months. They've been estimated for a year, some have been estimated longer than that, so probably out of the data. So we took the number of months that you've been estimating, and then the action consumption. It's taken off of the meter itself, and we averaged that out, and charged the customer for up to six months. The customer was underpaying for a year and a half, they're getting a year's worth of, of underpay, or a little back payment for six months. The problem is in the legs. Now, we're not just fixing the problem that we're underfilling, but we're also overfilling. And so we've also issued refunds. So it's not, it's not a one-way street. It goes both ways. So we've dealt with that problem on, on both sides, and here's where we are moving forward. From this point on, whether your register is getting that signal or we're getting an automatic read, that's your, your bill's active or disactive read. If it's not emitting a signal, it'll be an action person pulling the date off of your, your meter every month until it's dead. That's short term, right? Just the January first, January, the council approved the purchase installation of a new system, a completely new system, it's called A R system. People have trucks riding around, people, it works just like your house in the power meter. It gets the signal to the tower, which is then downloaded into the meter. We have that in progress. In twenty twenty-five, hopefully by the end of the year, of twenty twenty-five, and we, we, that's just gonna make the bills more accurate, provide ability of the system more accurate. And what the city's done, not only just moved forward and committed funds for that, we escaped litigation against Maxximeter in twenty twenty-one to recover funds that we believe owed to the city of things, right? The city has spent enormous amounts of money trying to correct this problem, dealing with, with the faulty equipment, purchasing the equipment, installing the equipment, lost revenue on these counts that are estimated. And, and so we, we did file a lawsuit against Maxximeter in twenty-one. It was passionate, we did reach sudden, and that lawsuit. And that money will be used to improve the water system and hopefully recoup some of the money, but the citizens have lost it.
So I guess my, my question, as it relates to procedures for determining, does he have a charge?
If you felt like you're overcharged?
Yeah.
Well, if you have an estimated bill, we would be happy to, to look at that and run it around. And if you're owed money, then we start, we issue you a month later, so, that's a situation.
Some videos have an E for estimated and A for actual, with interview and.
Yeah, there's, there's often sixteen hundred accounts that, that were corrected in January, and that's all because of this, you know, this big upswing. Right, those angry, frustrated customers. So that's the final quarter, it's the last sixteen hundred customers, and the goal is one percent actuary every month for a year and a half, so.
So in other words, you, you started the January bill and put a hundred, take a hundred as a pay.
This, the last sixteen hundred, yes, ma'am, I mean, we're fixing these for more than a decade.
A bill could have increased that to a hundred as a payment.
Yes, that's right. Yeah, so your January bill would have covered all of the underestimation. And so after the January cycle, everyone's bill should be square, and the action usage would be the action bill. Only the January bill will have the back payment, one month too much, about six, whatever else. I think that will be moving forward.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Janie. Have a question. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Ray Peterson, I'm State District 3, I'm Councilman Day, this is my city council. Um, as a resident of District 3, concerned about the future of our community, are there any efforts to, um, for CRO being prioritized in the economic development of the city? Are there any future plans to ensure that our neighborhood is not left out of progression and organization in the city's project?
Okay, we're gonna have somebody operate on that.
Let me say this, can I say this, can I say, can I say? Okay, um, CRO used to be very popular. I mean, I grew up here, there, down in South East City, Black Road. CRO used to be very popular. We had, um, two cleaners, M and M cleaners, cook cleaners. We had, um, a fish market, we had drug stores, we had restaurants, night and forth. I don't know if some of you all in town was, was there. We had, used to be a grocery store named Winters. But the key is, all those businesses, and I missed, I left something. All those businesses were established by people who put the capital in, black people, that put the capital in those businesses. This is the misconception that people have about CRO, and we get beat up all the time, particularly if you sit next to us ourselves, you know, because we are doing more on one, it was up, that's why I say, to that point, I say, early. And when I've gone to meet and talked with people and they asked, this is the question I ask them. You're right, why don't you get a group of people, raise the capital, and start doing businesses on CRO? City cannot use taxpayer monies to invest in businesses, because guess what? If we lose, I think you're gonna be more upset with us, because we're using taxpayer monies to put businesses down there. That no city can do that, it's a city idiot. So what I want to ask that you do, get some people, young people, let's work together and make CRO popular. But we can't use city funds to help with any of those businesses.
Hey, and earlier it was mentioned that there was a grant team for the city. Um, is that team unable to locate any visualization grants to build with that security?
Yes, we can, but you have to make sure they're out there. You have to look for them. A lot of grant teams do to get ahead, you have to constantly look. And I think that was mentioned earlier about the, uh, the question that Mrs. Patrick asked. You have to be constantly on there, yeah, just like with the bridge, we got friends to do that. But they have to be specific, but let me tell you something, to help us with grants when the opportunity comes, we need people in that community to also help us do that, where we can make sure that we have a greater chance of getting the grants. Now, just because you're a father, you don't always get it. But I agree with you. I grew up, now this little boy, bar shops, uh, and John James, uh, all of those businesses, those individual black people invested in that business. And that's why I've been challenging people who live out in that area, where I grew up in. Let, let's, let's get some capital together and invest, and take ownership out of it. I will tell you this, you will see some, some things going in there that are future. But guess what? It's not done by our people. They want these things done by our church, will be done by our church. So again, we need more people to be able to work together and put some capital, which is money, and, and just start looking for business opportunity. But we cannot invest city money, taxpayer money, to invest in, in the businesses on industry more than let's say CRO.
I have a more question about, it relates to animal control. Um, I've had to make several phone calls in my neighborhood because I have children, and there are a lot of issues dogs have wrong on the streets. Um, and nothing has been done by them.
Have you called?
I have called several times. Uh, I had this been, uh, I would say this been, like, six months ago, where a police officer shot at him. They charged him, he got hit out of his police car. Um, it was one of the neighbor's dogs that was going unleashed, there were several dogs that were on the streets. Um, it's not safe for my children to play outside.
Yeah, and we agree with you. We, we have two full-time animal control officers, and I'm gonna do something, it started right now, with Maxximeter. I don't remember, but let me know if that's where all this, so probably around the city and in Benson, Florida. We're actually just out in our park, before the meeting, we had vehicles around here, we had, um, a trap, a cage, you try to save it. You may be able to catch that dog, but we're aware that there's, there's problems around the city and we will, and we can be careful, and we can take care of it. And thank you so much, ma'am.
Um, Mayor, uh, Mayor, just a minute, uh, Mayor, I, I'm pretty proud on this, uh, I understand what the young lady is asking. But you're not the first person that approached me about fitness on CRO. I'm, I'm familiar with that whole CRO. That's the only way we can pray out back today, like the mayor said, I'm proud of everything you said. But initially, all of us, when folks do fitness, if you, if you're steady, if you're steady, don't let them put that investment, they're not gonna put that fitness on a place where you're not getting a good economy. Those fitness that on four thirty-one, they're, they're steady, that's what your fitness dominant on four thirty-one, four line. As the mayor said, we do come together as a, as a group and see what we can do. But there are some things coming down to CRO, as far as paying to CRO, that's what they're not gonna be paying. There are some plans to, uh, at least pay to CRO.
Well, the exit, are we ready?
Uh, 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 what, what?
I, I'm too late, I don't see a room.
No, but the state will get that, the state will change that. Can I say something? What I'm getting ready to say may not be very popular, but I can't do this one way, and that's to be honest. All right. CRO, we get beat up by CRO a lot of times, and I'm going to, to live by CRO. Now, we don't face the truth about how we try to change the city version-wise and try to be fair. I guess I have to look at two of the old people that I deal with a lot of the time, my cousin Mayo, who's right there, ambassador, on no words. A lot of people looking at things the way they used to be. It's not that way anymore. CRO was that way because colored people couldn't go anywhere else. So we had colored people that invested in businesses. If you start down CRO and you come back up with Mr. Stevens, with, with Mr. Fuller, with, with Laker Company. Grocery store, the male shoppers in there, grocery store, gas station. These were black, prideful people, and ownership was put there all the way through CRO when you couldn't go anywhere else. Now, a lot of the families did not follow that. You had the moms there, you had the cooks there, you had the orders, you had the powder shops, you had a lot of people doing this. A lot of our people with a lot of top pride have passed away. As far as you're looking at the big box, when we deal with Dollar General, to bring them here, it was there. One part of the negotiation was to put Dollar General on CRO, where the grocery store used to be. You even take the pride that was there with the American Leagues, we have a lot of veterans that's around here. They used to have baseball teams there, basketball teams for kids, prideful things that did. A lot of them don't get together and do that anymore. And we try to talk to people to think about what's gonna happen in CRO. We even had people years ago saying, well, the highway is gonna come through four thirty-one. People that was holding on to property, well, four thirty-one is developed already. You know, that's the southern end of the city where people are gonna establish fitness, where a multitude of people come through, they can pay their employees, that they can make money from. You know, it's not privatized, they can go to restaurants and stuff. But we need a announcement, if people want to see CRO, come back and bounce back. It's gonna take a lot of comfortable ownership and people that, you know, can have pride in what they're gonna do with personal businesses that's there. You know, you still can count the shops that's there, Johnny Bob shop that's established there sixty plus years. You have certain days that disappear, but I try to be honest about things, you know? If you want weak law and law to get rid of segregation, to open up areas where people can go anywhere they want to go and be established or live where they want to go. Now, we have a lot of that, we have so much of it, but it's the organizations that's got to get together that says that they wanna establish private businesses, and no matter who it is, whether it's black, white, green, yellow, whatever, they wanna establish a business that's there. But no one's gonna open up a business that they can't sustain. But I understand exactly what you're saying. I have to look at this in all my, and I hear different things being said. I don't care what form I'm in, I don't care what people I'm in front of. I'm gonna speak what I know for a fact, and I know how it was when we were kids. And, and one other thing that I can tell you about that, because most of the biggest large businesses are gonna locate on four thirty-one. That's what we go to. No matter what, how even other government guy does, Sean, we always try to promote and try to do that. Now, you do have a great point on what other funds were opened up from the federal government, which we see we have a large change in right now. A lot of things gonna be streamlined and we're looking at it, that we can have programs where people can fix up and establish open homes. They clean up and fix up things, but it bothers me a lot where, where we can't get some of the kids, get organizations together to clean up different areas, what we need to clean up. Not being taken, have pride in the different areas, there's so much pride that we lost over the years, you know? In that particular, in the communities and stuff, but it's no, it's nobody's coming to do that. It's, it's people that's gotta pick that up, their organizations, theirself, you know, within theirself. You know, it's things that the city can help do and take care of that. But you have a regular maintenance that should go there, you should always fight for that. You should know you fight for your road, you fight for your infrastructures that's there. You know, we have things down Fifth Street South, we've invested a large amount of money in the different areas of. But some of the things that you all don't see with parking wreck, that have to deal with all the time, is the constant vandalism that we have to deal with all the time, replacing things and putting things back in place. But we never give up pride as far as trying to do that. But see, a voice like yours makes a difference. A voice like yours can help us start something outside of fear, to get something started, and get, and have people to take pride in it. Because kids are different than what we were coming up, you know? It's a, it's a whole different thing to get them out there, because we get something to have in here with kids, and our police department try to have, have them try to be mentors, and some parents sometimes get in the way. You know, but the problem you all was talking about earlier, how does a fifteen and sixteen year old kid walk around their parents' house with a machine gun? How, that, that, and they say, what's the city gonna do? What are we gonna do in the home? This starts in the home, and it, it, you know, it don't, it don't matter who it is or what it is, what the problem is, that people bring here sometimes, and that we try to combat and take. See, I don't want to disappear and, and basically try to make everything seem just, just great, you know, to, to save the city. I believe in us being honest with one another and telling the truth to get back. Some people would say anything to satisfy you, would tell, tell you all that. Some people would say anything to satisfy you, to tell you all that. I'm not going to do that. We're going to look at what we see on the news in this area, we were talking about earlier, when Columbus has actually be FBI, GBI, we have the ABI, we have people everywhere that's controlling, some of that information can't be told because it's surveillance and they're trying to run that criminal element out. But it's a lot of things that they can't do, you know? The district attorney can tell you that, you know, he's in our hands. It's a lot of people, but it starts with, and I would say this, I'm not just trying to say things to be cool and stuff, but the only way we're going to get somewhere instead of just beating one another down and saying this person can't do this because we're racist, what anybody's saying. This city has come a long ways, a long ways, and we have a long ways to go. I'll say the things that people may not hear. We would never be a meat-free city, never. You wouldn't be in the jewelry department, you wouldn't have, but you're not designed because you got to possibly invest money into your system. And you all own that system, that system alone, you all, it's enterprise business. It's designed, it belongs to the citizens. Our job is to try to manage that system. And a lot of the time when people talk about increases and vehicles to keep that system going, a lot of people don't understand that until they can't push, or they can't turn, they're not.
Or get that.
But they expect that to happen. But the system, that's why I wish a lot of people would attend these meetings. I wish we could see some of you all and other people attend these meetings sometime because too many people enjoy hearing things from the street, which is nonsense a lot of the time. When you come here, you just ask, you know? Give the people a chance, give the council people a chance to build their credit door and say, because they have no reason why. A lot of times they sit down and show you these things, you'll see a whole different picture. But when you're talking about certain areas that you're looking at and cleaning up and people take pride in, I would love to see that, I would love to be a participant in it and help. But it's going to take people, someone to get that started and get people to follow that. You know, I know the church is trying to do everything that they can do, but you know, and it's not going to change, it takes more than that. School system's got to do, they can do what you're asking. It's way worse than maybe you all, you family members alike, come down and give with that kind of developments and charge.
Sure.
They real, yeah, they real, they real personal with it, so maybe it's.
Just now I'm going to put you in a spot where I'm curious, because works can be messy. But you say economic development, maybe it's something totally different than we tried. So I'm curious, are there any examples of when you say economic development, we only get in a home CRO, that might actually mean?
As far as businesses though, we do have some barber shops, so we can be some of us. We have a Dollar General, and we have a grocery store. But in comparison to other parts of town, our part of town does look abandoned. And I love to talk about the history of the town, it is very rich, but there are some people on CRO who are progressive and educated, and we feel like our part, I think in our community, it deserves a little bit more attention.
So when you said that you prefer revitalization, you're referring to certain types of businesses that you'd like to see, is that, that's more what I mean? More specific?
Yes, I would like revitalization, hipper businesses, some amenities of today's individuals. I would love to sit down with you and discuss some of these.
Share my thoughts as well.
What do you?
We live in a world that's much different when it comes to research. It's so different, it's so much more, we just know them, right? So decisions are made based on so much data as opposed to other factors. So I'd love to, that be there which based on.
Okay, so that was also your question. You would be counting, you know, like.
I would raise something in support of the city council in this process, because of course Mayor, now we started your job, we cure citizens of humiliation, we violate and economic development. So we asked, one of the things that I also, that keeps the city beautiful, so I'm always trying to encourage groups to clean, remove the bags, everything else. We always, now, you know, we have to work with the adult department, we have to actually work with the school, so just trying to, them to do their things in the school as a part of it, everybody. But I want to go back to CRO. The prior, I mentioned this before, but I said, the more that I mention this, maybe the people who will be in the audience will hear me that worked there before. How many years ago, how many years?
Miss Mayor.
Twelve years. Okay, so the old city council, we came and we talked to them about what could we do on CRO to enhance CRO, our businesses and all of that. The city said, well, we can't enforce, make the business people, you know, upkeep and everything, but we will do it. We will work with you. So keep the city beautiful, the city and cure wrote letters before our bank or people that own the property on CRO. And we asked them, the city said, we have to give you the paper. We gave letters to every business on CRO. That's been about twelve years ago.
Yeah, we had a system.
One person, many other barber shops using that paper. And no one else tried, and now look at it. So that's what I'm saying, we've got to establish some pride in our community. And I don't know if you heard, that's the other word I was saying, because I know you all are trying to do some things down in Chicago, we got a case of responsibility. This is going down, you need more now.
Well, John, you did something, he improved there something too.
But as you can see, it is not what it should be. That's a control of the place that you need. But this ain't true, now they're trying to do something for our planet.
This is good.
Oh, let me say this, please. I represent that district, when you talk about CRO. Let me say this to all of us, it really bothered me when I got a call and went down to Melvin Park, and I went to the restroom when somebody had broken up the Facebook, the commode, and all of that. I mean, we got to take everything out of our own area, that's what we got to do. And let me share this with all of us, it bothered me when I went down to Austin Summit Park, when somebody had stolen all of their, those on the place that sticks up, it bothered me. When I went down to Austin Summit Park, I went to the restroom, brand new commode, this two up. I mean, that's going to make it sense to me, it really bothered me. But I said that to say this to all of us that live in this district, we got to get everything out of our own area, that's what we got to do. I've been asking this for a minute time, Mr. Day, they actually nothing over here for the kids to do. I'm one person, but we got to invest in investment, we got to get everything out of our own area. And it bothered me and district free throughout this city when lots of folks throwing paper out of their cars and stuff. I put up behind us a person, right at the stop sign, we went to Fifth Street, sending out a group of tiny bags out there. I mean, that don't make any sense to me. But what we got to do, we got to take everything out of the city to keep it clean, we got to take everything out of personal, where we live at, pick up paper in the street, help us out here. This is your city, it's not ours, it's not Mr. Day or any of the council, it's your city, your tax dollars. We got to take action in that. I hate to get emotional, but it bothered me when folks tell me, we don't have anything on CRO, we don't have this thing. What if we knew, as a group? We got to take that mission, while we're set to do something about that. I just have one vote, folks, but I can tell you one thing, I can get you an answer, you might not answer that in your life, but I can get you an answer to what I tell all of my students. But I'm, I'm city council, that's what you're trying to do. What's right, I go, when you have a problem, I go business, what I do, my job, I do, that's what I do, that's the process that we have and that process that I take. Thank you.
Can I say something here, for instance?
Yeah.
Because it's hard to really get an audience of people that can take stuff in the way I'm being honest with you all. You know, so we have the years here, we have to put as much information in as possible. Because some of the things that I was saying earlier, when you were talking about the workforce, we as a city, we can't relax our drug policy on people, a lot of private companies can do that. I want people to understand that, that's why we have a shortage a lot of the time. I can put HR, people were wanting in our, HR department to get a job, just like CRO. If you go in here, you're contacted. We have problems like a lot of you have, we're fighting this every day to try to get that done. So if you want to see, if you would really take a look at what's going on.
If we have questions?
I do.
Miss Mayor, hey, how you doing?
My name is Sharon. My name is Sharon.
Hey, Gregson.
And we're trying to help. We've got problems with poor bills in our areas. What can we do about that? For example, if you guys going up the street, down the street, up the street, and there must be elderly people in our neighborhood, like a lot of times we cannot.
Have a call please.
Yes, you have a call.
See?
I'd say, Mayor, Mayor, I'd say it's for Fifth Street, I'd say, I've been down there numerous times, I've done it, and I even been down there numerous times, and if you want to have a chief come up and not wait for us.
I'm very familiar with the policy. We probably go up on some, Captain Thompson, probably go to you, but we sent all of them down there, really, four weeks ago, places that the patrol department can go, we run into that, I don't know if it's the power line, the gas line, or whatever, we had, we did that order, we popped up, they tried to run from all of them down there, right now. Also, in your street, pass through, it's dangerous, it's dangerous for them, it's dangerous for us to chase them, we haven't seen anybody get hurt. But really, if they come down, they just come down, find out what house they're going to, and they're at home, or they're at the door, and talking to some parents that we could control, I think that's the solution. Chase them, especially young folks, get those parents, get them, both the parents and both the children.
These are our children.
They're grown folks, be able to play football as well.
And can I say something? I want to commend officer that came down there, it has gotten better since we made the address, you addressed it. I live fifteen on one in Jackson Drive, and the action, the space open, the light, and I have made several complaints about this person. And it has happened to dogs, fireworks during Fourth of July, after Fourth of July, New Years, after New Years, fireworks still in the middle of Oak Street. And it has happened to her, and I thank you for that.
Okay, well, they don't find, they don't work.
I see.
A lot of times, yeah.
Yes.
You know how that goes.
There's another person that I want to address also, on that street. Yeah, it's a huge, huge vehicle that is sinking all across the road, and the water is shooting out, and it's just pouring right on the hill. Yeah, I really believe that needs to be.
Has it called the truck?
I did that last year, I did it last year.
Well, maybe more.
I had one of the, I had one of the other dogs.
She is old. For what, what address can I remember coming down? I found that in.
Six oh eight.
What address can?
Six oh eight, beautiful drive.
Six oh eight.
And the cars, cars really has to go around, a car can not go up or come down. If that car comes down, it has to wait until the other car go around, because it's really going to certain parts.
Are utility drivers getting?
Okay.
Adress.
Okay.
Utility driver.
Six oh eight, beautiful drive.
Six oh eight.
Six oh eight.
Oh, Mayor, let me ask you this, is there corn down there in the street?
Yes, there is.
Okay, once you see that corn down there, we need the city to have knowledge of that post.
John, you got the address? He'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Luke, come on up. Come on down.
I have to change today, on the fourteen on Eighth.
Yeah, address.
Right from the fourteen on Eighth, we saw, we ran on the other day, my wife said, oh, I have to change, on stop sign, on stop sign. National fifteen, fifteen Avenue, three, we wore twenty years of the fourteen on Eighth Street. That's not going to be too many, that's the post office. Look, with all this, this on, this street.
On the street?
Your street.
So it's not a bed?
Not a bed, it's only on the stop sign. So when the mayor there go out, moving up the deck, the token office, that would be in the wood.
Mayor, I listened to that today, and I've come to Mr. Luke already, they put a new sign in, a new stop sign, and I come to Mr. Luke, I don't see them changing the street like that.
Where the street is, would have been on the stop sign, had it been on Seventh Street, that way, Eighth Street going, what I would say, the now fifteen Avenue. That's not going to be too many.
So put you aware of?
I would not.
Did you tell them that?
I saw that today, I saw the change that he reported to, but again.
Thank you. They see it, that you gave us today, the phone number.
It's fourteen on.
Eighth Street. That's on the sign, it's the stop sign.
Okay. Definitely financial. If you show the address.
I feel like I can say that. So. I think we have to, we have to talk to the company, I was going to try and work out things.
And she would give a lot of.
A lot of time, all of them.
Yeah.
Why is that one of them?
Appreciate it. Do you have a question? Well, we've been here a while, but it's a good thing because we do want people to ask us questions. And we do want to ask you all to get involved, and we have nothing to hide. All this presentation that we went over is open to the public, not some things that I've been over, we can give you copies of that, about our loans and our debt coverage service and our number of years of days of reserve, all that's on here, and it's exactly what I told you. So if you're willing to get this, along with the, no, you got to pull that back, the package. If you want a copy of that, we can make arrangements for you to get that, but we are not, we are very Frenchman in what we want is people to come and talk to us first, don't get out there on Facebook like a lot of people do it, start saying things that are totally not true. But what I want to ask all of us to do, let's, let's work together to make our community better, the whole city. It's not, it takes all of us, and I sincerely and wholeheartedly ask, and I know people are going to try to provide us, but we got to refuse to not let people do that. Of what one picked us, and this council, you know, we love this, all of us. The board chose to come back here, you know, my wife and I chose to come back here, and ones that's been here, stayed here because they love being a citizen. But we want you all to help us, to help us, we're citizens too.
Mayor?
It's going to take all of us.
Uh, Mayor, I can't remember, but if you've been in Charlotte, that's all the folks that came in District Three that I invited them.
No, I wasn't there.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mayor, that's on my mind, and I'm going to ask all the folks that in District Three, would you please stand? District Three.
Let's do this, all of you, everybody can think, say the thing.
No, no, no. I'm going to sit here, I'm going to sit here right now. I have District Three right there, okay? Thank you. Mr. Luke, where you at?
No, we can listen, honestly. Help us to help us. And listen, 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 on that paper, you see on there, that's about listening. We listen, we want to do it right, but you got to let us know, and if you think we're hitting the B key and we need to hit the A key, let's not talk about it, let's, let us show you that we're hitting the right key, or you show us that we're hitting the wrong key, and we can go off in the sunset happy. But thank you all so much for being here, we appreciate you all. If you want copies of this, if you want your weapon, get it, but we did not put this on the screen, but if you want a copy of it, to look at all our debt, our obligations, our debt service and all those things, the amount of cash we have, more than that we get. Okay, because we don't want anybody coming out. Like I got a call yesterday, and Shannon heard it, that one point two million dollar lawsuit, or settlement, they got, this person thinking you taking the money, spending it, and charging them more on a water bill. And you have heard some of the words he said. But anyway, thank you all so much for coming, keep us accountable, we certainly want to keep you all accountable. Thank you, yes, sir.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, sir. Very quickly. Very quickly.
I apologize for that, but this, this is the Fifth Street, I just wanted to share this, I felt we needed to share. My name is. Uh, my name is Ben Malone, I've been, I'm not a neighbor, citizen of King City, uh, but I've been here for about eighteen years now, probably. Uh, I'm originally from a little small place called, I don't know, down in Oak Hill, uh, but I've been in this community long enough to be concerned about this, you know. And, and hearing people express their concerns, and things they're, uh, concerned about this city, then I do feel the need to share this with me. Uh, the saying that I, that I love, and that says is that, a society grows great when old men, like trees, the shade which they know have never seen.
You, you're a sheriff, say again? You're the military.
Old men.
Yeah, that sound like one of the races.
Your first officer, yeah, yeah, yes, sir. So, so in saying that, we need to be mindful of what we are, like everyone here this evening has expressed, what can we do to make things better? You know, what, what, what can we do? Cause, cause all of us have the ability to, to some degree, get changed in the months of city. To some degree, we can do the changes in the months of city. And, uh, there's a lot of different opinions, there's a lot of different perspectives based on what each community needs. But every, every, every place is, is, you get more done when you bring those perspectives together and work together, based on what you, what you need as a city. I just wanted to.
Thank you for expressing that.
You know, I just feel like, like, um, like I said, I'm learning, I probably learned more about King City in the last, probably like ten to twelve years, and I, you know.
And you see, have you been able to see the growth?
I have.
Yeah, this, this validated, this, I know.
There's definitely a lot more growth, more growth than we're starting out here, so, so, I, I appreciate it, thank you, and, uh, I just wanted to express that.
Thank you so much, you've been here for a while, thank you all, give yourselves a hand. Just come talk to us, that's, that's, something you don't like, come talk to us, we're gonna follow some of that. And so when we follow, we gonna build, our profit, and finally, we gonna gain. So thank you all so much, may God continue to bless us in this city, and where this is.